Good evening. I'd like to call to order the June 10th Lansing City Council meeting. Clerk Swop, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Cost. Councilmember Pelavonaglue.
President.
Councilmember Spadefor. There are seven members present in quorum. Councilmember Cost is... We'll be right back. We are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, we are to meditation. Do we have any council members at this time would like to have someone remembered? Mayor Shor, do you have anybody you'd like to be remembered at this time? Okay. Let's stand for a moment of meditation followed by the... Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I'd just like to keep the family of Attorney Ken Marx in mind. He is a... was a great person. He died younger than expected, recently retired from the public defender's office. He's worked around this area and has a great reputation. And he was a very good family man, and he will be missed by many people.
Thank you for that, Councilman Jackson. Okay, let's please rise for a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unlatent, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You have for your approval three sets of council proceedings for May 6th, 13th, and 20th.
Okay, Vice President Hussein.
Sure. I'd move the council proceeding minutes as presented for May 6th, May 13th, and May 20th.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a tribute in recognition of Amalia Villarreal.
Okay, Councilwoman Pelavonaglue. If there's anybody here for this tribute in recognition, please come down to the well. Bring your family, everybody here.
Thank you, President Garza. I think there are money people here for this tribute this evening.
Any and all that's here, please come to the well.
Thank you.
There we go. Now that's a family.
Yeah, don't be shy. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here.
Fill in.
Good-looking bunch of folks.
Well, this is a testament to how special Amalia is to her family and friends. I'd like to begin by reading portions of this tribute resolved by the City Council of the City of Lansing. Whereas Amalia Villarreal was a senior at JW Sexton High School, taking online courses, which enables her to play soccer for the Michigan Jaguars and Solar Soccer Club as a forward. And whereas Amalia began playing soccer when she was three years old. At age five, she earned a Purple Bell in Taekwondo, which taught her self-discipline and determination. Along the way, she was also playing a variety of other sports, including gymnastics, flag football, T-ball, basketball, and swimming. And whereas, in May 2024, Amalia was selected to play on the US YWNT U-20 soccer team representing the United States in Spain. She also helped the U-19 Team USA to a bronze medal in the 2023 Pan American Games as the top scorer with four goals and two assists. She helped win a UWS National Championship after scoring a hat-trick in the semifinal match. Amalia earned a United Soccer Coaches All-American Honor, earned the CONCAF U-17 Championship with the USYNT in 2022, and participated in the FIFA U-17 Women's World Cup. And whereas, after graduating, Amalia will be attending the University of Texas in the fall on a full soccer athletic scholarship and will study sports management. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lansing City Council hereby wishes to congratulate Amalia Villarreal on her dedication, commitment, and passion. We wish you continued success. And with that, I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Amalia, and I honestly just want to say thank you to everyone who has helped me get to here today. I couldn't do it without them. I'd like to thank God because without him, none of this is possible, and the community who has helped me to become the person that I am today, so.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right. Next, we have a tribute in recognition of the Juneteenth celebration and holiday.
Councilman Brown.
If we could have everybody for Juneteenth come forward, thank you. Each of your council... Each of my council colleagues have a substitute here for the Juneteenth. If we could take a look at that while they're coming up.
Okay, everybody should have a copy of a substitute resolution by Councilman Brown.
And the substitution just would include at the bottom there highlighted for you that it be further be resolved, the City Council would recommend that the Juneteenth flag would also be on the flagpole during the month of June to celebrate and honor Juneteenth. Additionally, we have the resolution including, of course, Juneteenth as the oldest African-American holiday.
So we have a proper motion to adopt a substitute. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, and so Marilyn, please understand I'm fully supportive of this, right? But I do want to ask the question of law in terms of, because this is now the second recommendation essentially to the administration to hoist a flag out of the flagpole. Whose responsibility ultimately is, you know, whether it's the flagpole outside, whether it's, you know, permanent flags inside of the lobby downstairs, sorry, whose responsibility is to vet those requests and ultimately honor those requests?
Well, I'm going to answer it not in terms of vetting or honoring requests, but just that under the charter and ordinances, mayor, the mayor is the manager of real, all real property, and that would fall within that. Is it? Yeah, you can hear me, right? Maybe just pull it a little closer. Sorry, I am congested and my voice is very monotonous at the moment. Just that management of real property, which this would fall under, is under the charter and the ordinances, falls to the mayor. So in terms of all of it, that would go to the mayor.
Okay. The reason I ask the question is I want to be careful that we are not... I'm sure your office has some objective criteria essentially it uses to vet these types of requests. I want to make sure that council doesn't become the entity that is onboarding these requests, and then we're asked essentially to pick winners and losers based on criteria we don't even know. The reality is, we don't have the power to say, yes, we're going to put this flag up. Yes, we're going to put this flag in the lobby. So I think moving forward, again, very, very supportive of this, but I think moving forward, I would prefer that those requests go to the administration.
Mayor Shor.
So we have the request as we saw last time with Pride and with this one and any others. My concern with them coming to me and me saying yes right off the bat is if I say yes to one, I have to say yes to everything. And there are certainly some flags that I would rather not hang outside the cap, outside the City Hall, to be honest with you. So what I have told folks is, and Councilman Cost and I had this conversation, Councilman Garza and I had this conversation, and we don't have to agree on this, but I would like to know that there is a request from council because then it's a vetting process. Now, it's a request. You can request it from me like anything else, and I can say no, or I can say yes. But I like to know that there's a request, so that way if someone comes to me with something that I don't think would be appropriate, I cannot say no. If I say yes to one, I have to say yes to all. Now at least I have the opportunity to say, you know what, we do not have a request from council. So there is no, there's no process. This hasn't been a thing before. In my seven years, this has not been a request. So for me, rather than having to accept everything regardless of content, there could be things that we all don't want to see flying in front of City Hall. I'd like it vetted by council and to have recommendations. So when someone comes to me and says, you didn't put mine up, I can say council did not ask me to, and I did not honor their request. So it is up to me at the end of the day, but my concern is hanging things that we may not, that we may not want to see, our community may not want to see.
So Mr. City Attorney, then, is that in fact true? That if he were to say yes to one, he would have to, you know, maybe there's a liability to the city, maybe worried about litigation, would he have to say yes to all requests?
I will beg time to get you a more complete answer on that because it is not a very simple question.
All right, thanks so much.
Flag law, as exciting and as silly as the name as that may sound, is rapidly changing.
All right, well, thank you. Okay, Councilman Jackson. Sorry, guys.
Thank you. Just because it's on point, I would like to remind everybody that the Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, this Wednesday has this topic on the agenda. I would like to invite a representative from the mayor's office since, and the attorney to hopefully maybe have something in a couple of days for us to start with and start the discussion on. And that's Wednesday, 4:30, right up here this Wednesday. And thank you, Juneteenth people.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, and not to be combative, I just, I do not want to put this council in a position where we are having to publicly pick winners and losers, particularly when we really have no authority. I mean, at the end of the day, per our charter and ordinances, you are the manager of real property, not us. And so I really do believe that moving forward, this is a decision that your office and your office exclusively should be making. Thank you.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place to adopt a substitute. All those in favor of adopting the substitute, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Councilman Brown.
All right, well, I'm going to do my, I'm going to do my best to read this. I have two copies, one with the bigger font now. Whereas the oldest African-American holiday was recognized, first recognized on June 19th, 1865, and is now an official state holiday in 15 states across the country. It was on June 19th, 1865, the news of the Emancipation Proclamation, when President Lincoln signed on January 1st, 1863, reached the slaves of Texas. And whereas, learning of their freedom, June 19th, 1865, became the true independent day for African-Americans in the United States of America. And we have a lot of whereas's. I know they want to speak about all of the event, and so I will put, go down to the bottom here. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lansing City Council hereby recognizes the 31st Annual Lansing Celebration of Juneteenth and the 20th Year Recognition of the State of Michigan Juneteenth Holiday. We extend our appreciation to the Juneteenth Committee for all of their work in continuing the founding theme, Juneteenth, the truth. We wish you much success, and be it finally resolved that the City of Lansing City Council recommends that the Juneteenth flag fly on the Lansing City Hall flagpole during the month of June.
Councilman Brown, we need a motion for that resolution.
Okay, and a motion for this resolution.
Okay, we've got a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. It's truly a blessing and an honor to come before you today. The Juneteenth Committee here of Lansing, 31 years strong in celebrating Juneteenth here in the City of Lansing. So we thank you. We appreciate the support of the city, its citizens, and all who are involved. We come here sharing information. You've heard a little bit about the history of Juneteenth. What may be new to you is the request to fly a flag, the Juneteenth flag, over City Hall. We come doing so recognizing that the Juneteenth National Flag, and I think we all know that Juneteenth is a national holiday. And quite simply, it is also a state of Michigan holiday. Our committee advocated very strongly on both instances for the national holiday and for the state of Michigan. So it is just a blessing and an honor that our city would acknowledge and certainly share with the rest of its citizens our desire and passion to be able to celebrate Juneteenth for another year. So we thank you. We think that our request, we want to thank Councilman Brown and all of those who have voted to affirm. We certainly come with being able to communicate, to be able to share what we feel very strongly about the freedoms of all people, not just African-American descent. So that's what's important to us, sharing also the display of the Juneteenth flag. So I certainly want to commend the council, their concerns. Procedures are important. Before coming here today, we looked up what other cities across our state have a similar situation. And there are quite a few, actually. There's 10. So Western, Washtenaw County, Oakland County. We have the city of Southfield, Pontiac, Ann Arbor for four years. Ferndale, Wayne State University, Chicago, Illinois, Wisconsin State Capitol, Brigham Public Library, Boulder, Colorado, Laurel, Maryland. And a Juneteenth flag also flies in the Lansing Community College Board Room. So we, again, feel that it's important. We thank you for the considerations. We respect process. So whatever the process might be for us as well as others, we're all just asking for the same thing, for process. We don't come to disregard any processes. Once we know what they are, we truly want to respect that. We want to thank them for the considerations. I understand things need to be thought out, and we're here for that purpose to communicate that as well. So I guess we're here to say thank you, not guess, we're here to say thank you, and we're looking forward to another jubilant year of celebration in the city. We've done much to prepare, and we hope that you all will come out. So I'd like to introduce our committee. I'm really proud today to have our chairman of our board, of our nonprofit called Piers. The Reverend Dr. A. Richard Dost is here from the city of Detroit. He felt it was important to be here, and we are thankful for his presence. And he's our scholar that keeps us informed and updated about Juneteenth history. So Dr. Dost, is there anything you would like to share with us?
Just a snippet. Good evening, everyone. Just want to remind you in terms of its history that enslaved African people in Texas did not find out about their freedom until June 19th, 1865. And of course, Major General Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, along with 4,000 troops in order to make sure that the tenets of the Emancipation Proclamation were enforced in the state of Texas. And of course, when that news rang out, that freedom was there, the people celebrated. Hence, the name Juneteenth. Also, just want you to remember the fact that it is now a national holiday on June 17th. In 2021, President Biden signed the legislation creating the Juneteenth National Freedom Day or the Juneteenth National Holiday, as it might be called. Thank you, and again, come and celebrate.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dost. So one of the hardest-working committees standing behind me, Lansing Juneteenth Committee, we have so much to offer this year, but first, we want to take a moment to invite you to our kickoff, which will be held on Thursday, June 13th, at Lansing Community College in the Gannon Building in the Michigan Room. So we bid you welcome. We're going to be celebrating young people who have earned the right to be called winners of the scholarship and the essay competition. So they will be acknowledged and awarded of their efforts and the things that they have learned. So that's one thing that's very important. We also want you to come because we are wanting to share a fabulous voice for not just the city of Lansing, but also the state of Michigan. Our keynote speaker is going to be Teresa A. Kane Bingman, Esquire. We call her the social justice warrior. And so she will be here to deliver a message that's uplifting and one that certainly will be very impressive to young ears as well as old. So we do want to invite you to come off, come over to the kickoff on Thursday, the 13th, at 5:30 to 7:30 is our program. And again, it's in the Michigan Room in the Gannon Building. So we'd like to share some of the other unique things, wonderful things that are happening with the Juneteenth Committee. So I'm going to ask Ayana, who's a member of the Health Fair Committee, as well as the Education Committee, to come up and just share a little bit. I think you can, oh, there we go.
Thank you. Ms. Marilyn, I'll just add that Thursday, June 13th, at 5:30, we will have the 2024 Miss Vivian Riddle Lansing Juneteenth Essay Competition and Scholarship Award Program. Like Marilyn mentioned earlier, these are students that have been awarded the title of being winners, and they will all be announced at this time. So please come on out and celebrate with us and celebrate our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, thank you. So as I look around the room, we have many committee members that do a number of things. And so I'm going to ask also, as they would go around the room, that they just introduce themselves quickly and kind of say what it is, which committee they work with. So we're going to start with our treasurer here.
Hello, my name is Latoya Beasley. I am the treasurer on the committee, and I like to say I try to keep our finances in order so that we are able to have this festival that we do every year, you know, for the community at no charge. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and at least we have Vanessa, if you would come forward.
Hello, everyone. I'm Vanessa Beasley, her mother. And I am the volunteer coordinator. So I'm just basically responsible for getting the forms that are returned or sent in to volunteer and keep everyone where they need it. So when the volunteers come in, they check in with me, and then I send them to the different areas where they are needed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have a number of members. We have Joy, as well as Marsha, who served with the vendors and facilities. So I want them to step forward.
I don't know. I mean, whoever they are. Okay, well, I'm over the facilities for our event. And besides having Urban, and then Melvin is not here. I'm responsible for the park and everything in it, and making sure everybody is set up right. But I'm not over that part of the park. I'm making sure that the showmobile gets there. Just make sure everything is intact by the time everybody gets there. So that's me.
All right, thank you, Susan. And on behalf of also facilities, we do have Urban Pratt that is with us, and he definitely is a great part of the facilities.
Hello, everyone. I'm Urban Pratt. I am part of the facilities team, and we are the soldiers that are going to make things happen Friday and Saturday. And that's from 8 till we close.
All right, and we've indicated Marsha. She certainly is a vendor at the celebration as well as a wonderful cook, and she is in charge of our food vendors.
Yep, Marsha Cunningham, and that's what I do.
All right, and then make sure I got everybody, and then Alicia, if you would, on behalf of our Health Fair.
Hi, everyone. I am Alicia, and I'm going to represent two things that I participate in. One of them is the Health Fair, which is, we've mentioned the date is this Saturday, the 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We have tons of vendors and sponsors, such as University of Michigan Health Sparrow is one of our main sponsors. And so we're just asking you to come out if you want to learn more about the community resources that we have here in our city and surrounding areas. There will be literature, there will be things that will be given away as well. The other event I am representing is the 5K Juneteenth. This is our second annual one of a walk, run, or roll. So I'm representing Ramon Brunson for that. It is a fabulous event. Tons of vendors will be there, tons of participants. He's exceeded his goal. He exceeded one last year, exceeded another one this year, so come out for that as well. Thank you.
So I'm just going to add, if you're coming out for that, that's early morning, it's 8:30. Sexton High School track. You can still sign up as late as Friday at our event. We are using St. Joseph Park here in the city of Lansing. So that's where we'll be anchored down for Friday and Saturday, which we've mentioned. The only other thing we'd like to mention before we actually leave you all is don't forget about the parade. It's well-received on the west side of the city. So our parade will also kick off at JW Sexton High School at 11 o'clock, and it goes through the West Side Neighborhood, and it ends up at St. Joseph Park. And that's where we have the main stage, a lot of fun. So we certainly welcome all of you. We do believe that some of our participants are the mayor, some of the city council and people. So we're looking for you all to come out and appreciate and enjoy the parade, the young people that are involved, as well as some that are not so young. But we have a great time. We have a great time. So please share that information. Our website is www.lansingjuneteenthcelebration.org. You'll find our entertainment schedule there. There's much to do for the kids. So it's a day to be out, to have fun. And again, now that you know why we celebrate, Juneteenth is worthy of celebration. Thank you again. All right, so. Okay, come on.
I'm Joy Gleason. I am a vendor coordinator, particularly for the merchandise vendors and also another member of the facilities team.
Thank you, Joy. We have said enough, and we just hope that we'll see some of your smiling faces this weekend. You should have gotten our invitation. I think Sherry made sure that you all got our invitation. I have some mini flyers just to remind you. So we hope you'll take a moment out of your day to celebrate Juneteenth with us. There's also other Juneteenth celebrations going across the region. So there's a lot going on here in the city of Lansing, a great place to live, right? Okay, thank you.
Marilyn, just real quick before you go, I just wanted to say thank you. As a young person, so I, well, let me back it up. I see the impact, I think, of you and your committee's advocacy in the schools all the time. When I was a young person, I recall... When I was a young person, I recall the issuance of, you know, learning about the issuance of the Emancipation Proclamation. But we certainly didn't know anything about Juneteenth. Really didn't know about, you know, the full enforcement of the proclamation through June 19th, 1865. Didn't know a whole lot about the ratification of the 13th Amendment, December of 1865. And certainly didn't learn a lot about different civil rights laws, culminating with 1964, and really the full enfranchisement, right, of all of our people. So, in any event, I just want to thank you, because I'll be honest with you, there's not a lot of young people today in our schools that don't know about the significance of June 19th, 1865. And it's folks like you and the advocacy on your end that are, I think, result in that. So, thank you. We appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Joy. Did we get everybody a flyer or something?
Okay, we do have another special ceremony, a tribute and recognition of the National Women in Ministry and Leadership Conference.
All right, Councilwoman Carter.
Bishop Dr. Reed, if you could please join me in the well. Thank you. So, I also have, resolved by the City Council of the city of Lansing, a resolution here, whereas the National Women in Ministry and Leadership Conference was first held in 2015, and now brings leaders from throughout the USA to Lansing, Michigan. Whereas Bishop Mona Reed leads this annual effort, along with several other distinguished individuals. Bishop Mona Reed has a doctorate from Wayne State University, where she specialized in leadership and cultural determinants of health behavior. Whereas in 2017, Bishop Reed made history in the oldest Pentecostal organization, the Pentecostal Assemblies of the World, Inc., as the first female bishop with the diocese becoming diocesan bishop for the 34th Episcopal, excuse me, diocese of the Republic of Sierra Leone, West Africa. Also, whereas in 2014, June 13th through the 15th, the National Women in Ministry and Leadership Conference is dedicated in celebrating and supporting women in leadership roles. They will feature inspiring speakers, engaging workshops, and networking opportunities to help participants grow and thrive in ministry and in leadership journey. Whereas throughout the Conference of Global Leaders will share their expertise in their respective fields of finance, business, theology, and leadership, an effort to empower others. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the city of Lansing, City Council recognizes the National Women in Ministry and Leadership Conference for inspiring and empowering female ministers and leaders globally. And I would like to move this motion, this resolution. Make a motion.
Thank you. We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments, questions from council? I see none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the council. This is truly a monumental event, and we're just so happy that it's being held here in the city of Lansing. Lansing is not only the state capital, but Lansing is a micro-nism of the world. There are people from around the world who live here, not just as refugees, but as immigrants as well, who go on to become citizens. And one of the things that we do is we help them to become U.S. citizens, which means they pay taxes in the city of Lansing. So, we are very excited about this. We have ministers from the international community that will also be joining us for the next three days. And so, everything that we do has a global focus. So, I just want to thank the council at this time. And if you want to stop by, we'll be at the AC Hotel of Marriott, right on Michigan Avenue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now, we have a presentation about repealing and replacing the existing sign ordinance in its entirety.
All right, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so later in the evening, we actually have a resolution to set a public hearing. That would be for July 8th, and that would be in consideration of a complete repeal and replacement of our existing sign ordinance. We, at our last Development and Planning Meeting, did have our principal planner, Mr. Andy Fiedewa, as well as, sorry, our zoning administrator, Susan Statuick, with us to present. We, sorry, we moved that out of committee, and I asked at that time if they would be willing to come down and just give us a few highlights of what we're kind of looking to do with the repeal and replacement of our existing sign ordinance. So, we are going to turn the floor over to you two, and I would expect just a similar presentation as to what we got in DNP. Thanks so much.
Thank you. So, the ordinance that we're operating on right now was enacted, adopted in 1990. So, it's completely outdated. It's not consistent with current case law regarding signage in terms of freedom of speech and, you know, basically not being able to regulate content, but focusing on size, number of signs, square footage, you know, that type of thing. So, there's a, I think y'all have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation here, just a mention of a sign ordinance that we kind of piggybacked off of a little bit, that's a very up-to-date and modern ordinance that is consistent with current case law. And then with a mention of a, of a case that is very important in that regard. What it, in essence, what this does is that it, it makes the ordinance more consistent. Right now, it's easier to administer and to enforce. Right now, the, for example, for ground signs, what you're permitted for a ground, free-standing sign is, the height and square footage is based on a setback. So, the greater the setback, the more height and square footage are permitted. What that results in is having signage all over the place. You know, some are right by the street, others are 30-foot feedback. This makes it very consistent so that it's, creates a uniform signage pattern like you see in other municipalities. If you drive down Saginaw Street, Saginaw Highway, Delton, you see the signs are pretty much lined up like soldiers. And it looks, it's very consistent. So, that, this does the same thing. It sets a standard setback, it's 10 feet. And then at that setback, you're allowed up to so much height and so much square footage. And so much easier to administer, easier for the sign companies to look at that and know what they can and can't do. And it'll, it will improve the city's streetscape. With, same thing with regard to wall signs. Wall signs, right now, you're allowed two wall signs, one on the front wall of the building, one on another wall. Well, why not, can't you have one on both of the sidewalls? Now, you, you have to pick which one you want traffic going by to see. It doesn't make sense. So, we're trying to, you know, clear up some of those, some things that just really don't make sense as well. And then the final thing, and I know that I'm kind of not really going through this in order, but just kind of hitting the high points, is that we also, you know, place greater restrictions on temporary signs. Temporary signs, as you know, can have a negative impact on the streetscape. And, you know, when people start using too many of them, putting them in the right-of-way, uncontrolled temporary signs can really, can really hinder the appearance of our commercial corridors. And the other thing, one of the things I want to point out is that this would not permit any more billboards in the city. Right now, the way the ordinance is written is that in order to put up a new billboard, you have to take two down. This will not allow you to put up any new billboards, period. The one exception to that is that if it's necessary, if a billboard has to be removed, it's necessary to accommodate development that is where the property is zoned for it and where it's consistent with the master plan, you, we would be able to do that. Now, here's the, here's what, we've already actually done that under the current ordinance, but it took a few more hopes than just saying, no, you know, just having it written in there, is the development of the 600 block of East Michigan Avenue, the Myers, the Hotel, et cetera. There was a, there was a, Adams Outdoor had a long-term lease with Brogans to have that, have that billboard there. And when the deal was being made between the developer and the owner of Brogans, Adams would not let them out of the contract. So, that would have killed that entire deal. The only way that they would let them out of the, allow that billboard to be removed was if they were able to put up, put up another one, hence the additional billboard that's on the south side of that building. If that wasn't there, that development would not be there. The billboards are very lucrative. And so, now, the one exception to this also is ones that are located along highway, along freeways, because those are not under the jurisdiction of the city, those are in the jurisdiction of MDOT. So, if you see new billboards or billboard, you know, replacements or whatever going up along the freeway, that's, that's not us. But along our major quarters, what we have is what we have. We're not going to have any new ones. And hopefully, over time, we'll reduce some of those, again, reducing visual clutter. The other thing we do is we just kind of cleaned up some of the language, just to make it more clear, more concise, which in the turn makes it easier to enforce. You know, especially if we end up in court on something, you know, it's not a matter open to interpretation or someone's discretion, it's just crystal clear as to what's allowed and what's not. And I think I've hit the high points. Andy, do you have anything you'd like to add? Like I said, I didn't really follow along with this, but I think that's a good overview of what, of what this intended, this is intended to accomplish. Andy? Okay, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions from council? Vice President Hussein.
If you covered it, I apologize. Can you talk to me a little bit, or talk to us, sorry, about how this addresses abandoned sign infrastructure, as well as the frame? If you did, I apologize.
No, I didn't, and thank you for bringing that up, because that is one of the major changes. Right now, what it says in the ordinance is that an abandoned sign is a sign which remains on the property six months after the business has ceased to operate there. That language is still in the, is still going to be in this ordinance. Here's the catch, is that the way that's written, it says the sign can, it has to be removed. So, we have a situation where we have, where we have one of them, we have a few of them, but one of them in particular down on South MLK, where you have the sign structure. So, when we send somebody to them and says, hey, you know, there's no business on that property, there hasn't been a business on that property for years, you got to take that down. We were challenged on it, said, no, that's a sign structure. It's not, the sign has no signage on it. And that, that is actually true. So, now, what this says is that the signage itself has to be removed after six months of the business operation, after a certain period of time, and I believe it's 12 months, the sign structure, if there's no, if there's no business on that property, the sign structure itself has to be removed as well. We didn't want it to, we didn't want, we wanted to allow that a little bit more time so if a business does move in, they can take advantage of the sign that's here because with, you know, putting in the faces, replacing the faces and so forth. But the structure itself, we, at some point, we would be able to require that to be removed. Not to really call out a particular property, but there's a very large sign down on South MLK. And, but it's not in bad shape. Structurally, it's sound, but it's been there for years. There's not been a business occupying that property in a lot of years. And, you know, we would like to, that was the one I was actually referring to, where we tried to get it to be removed, but the language really just didn't back us up enough on that.
I'll call the property out. So, we're talking about the Old Metro, right?
Yes.
So, and I guess I have a question with regard to that. So, with that, with that structure now, the way it is, and I actually asked you, sorry, in this, in committee, why were we not able to go after that structure as a dilapidated structure?
Because it, well, it's not, because it's not structurally unsafe. It just doesn't look nice. It just doesn't look good. But it's, the, under the current ordinance, if something is damaged or structurally unsound or anything that was, it's, you know, could cause damage to persons or property. We can, our ordinance right now allows us, you know, the ability to do that. But what it's just is ugly, you know, and that's really a Metro sign, there's nothing we can do.
Any additional, Councilwoman Carter?
Quick question. So, if we wait the 12 months and then remove the actual structure of the sign, how soon before the hole or any issues are filled so that there's no risk of anyone being injured if they happen to walk or bike or what have you?
We would not allow holes to be left in the ground. We have another ordinance that deals with that, with the parking lot and, you know, it happened to be safe so that people don't damage their cars or, like you said, if they're coming across there in a bike or something like that, that they're not going to get injured. We have a separate ordinance that would deal with that situation.
All right, city attorney.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify one thing about what Ms. Statuick said about the 12-month period and sign structures coming down. That's because it has to be. It's limited to non-conforming sign structures, which I'll just observe. A lot of the structures that currently exist in the city of Lansing would be non-conforming under the new sign code. But if a sign were up and the property were vacant, sorry, if a sign structure existed that complied with this new sign code and the property were vacant, the sign structure, although it would not have a sign on it, the sign structure would not be required to be taken down. I just want to clarify that, because it would be in compliance. It would be, it would belong to the property so that if somebody did move in, they could put their sign on the sign structure. So, I know that that's a nuance, but we can't take down something that's in compliance with the code. However, sign structures that are not in compliance, that are not in use for up to 12 months, go under, they would lose lawful, non-conforming status. So.
Thanks, Greg. Sorry for not making that clear.
Sorry, boring lawyer clarification, but it matters.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any additional questions, comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Just real quick, so I guess I'm just curious. In terms of the actual enforcement, if we were, as an example, we had, we had a structure, non-conforming, 12 months, whatever it is, would we, if they don't take it down, do we contract and have it taken down and then bill the owner? Do, do we seek court order compliance? What does that look like?
It would be, it would be a court process eventually, but it would start with us noticing them and saying, hey, you've got to take this down. You've lost non-conforming status. And then if they don't, then we go to court, and we seek to have the court say, the city, you can take it down. And then we take it down and we bill them.
Thank you. I was just going to ask that question about regarding enforcements and fines levied. For instance, like the prohibited signs, you see them on telephone poles or whatever. How would you go after certain people like that? I mean, let's say it's an advertisement to handyman services or a real estate person.
We take them.
You just take them down?
We just take them.
Okay.
And dispose of them. We don't give them back. We just take them and, you don't have a right, people don't have a right to do that. They don't have a right to put signs on telephone poles or in the public right-of-way. If you see them, you take them, you know.
Definitely well aware of them not having the rights, but they do it every day.
Yeah, and it's a never anything. I mean, you can go out, you sweep the city and take every one of them, and two days later, you're going to be all over the place again. It never ends. But, but we, we just take them.
Okay, Mayor Short, did you have a comment?
I did, and anyone who's in my cabinet is laughing. Councilman Garza actually raised this with me a few months ago. And I started taking down the signs as an officer of the city, and I would bring them in the cabinet every Monday and say, I hate these. I hate these, because I know, we both agree on this. And literally, we had OCA sending them letters saying, you cannot do this. Well, I was going to mention this later, I'll mention it now. Dick Pefley, to his credit, said, those are, those are Board of Water and Light poles, and it's actually dangerous to put those signs on, because people have to go up and down the poles, and we have an ordinance, and the board has started taking those down. So, in four of the main streets, I believe Saginaw, Cedar, Pennsylvania, and one other, if you go down now and you look, those poles are clean. I actually mentioned to him, I was at the corner of Miller and MLK, or Washington, Miller and Washington, over the weekend, and I mentioned, he said, they're going to get to those, too. So, the board has done us a service by helping to clean our city. So, I wanted to thank the Board of Water and Light. And I do thank you, Mr. President, because you raised this with me at a leadership meeting a few months ago, and it's, it's made me very upset that people are littering, illegally littering our city, and in essence, getting free business promotion when there are businesses that pay for that kind of promotion. So, those have been taken down, and those businesses have been alerted that if they go back up, we're going to cite them. Thank you.
Councilman Spetafor, and then Cost.
It's probably something that might have been overlooked or maybe not. Chapter 606.03, which is not part of the sign ordinance, but is part- which is not part of the sign ordinance, but is part of the, is it the General Offense Code, Mr. City Attorney, relates to removal, posting and removal of signs advertising sales and auctions. The only reason I remember this is we did a whole ordinance about this, and it's temporary signs for auctions and sales and things like that. And there's separate rules for those, and I just want to make sure they don't conflict with the new chapter 1300.
Are you referring to like garage sales and that type of thing?
Garage sales and auctions. There was a specific concern from some of the auctioneers in town that there was an issue with how we regulated them.
They're not supposed to. I mean, they're putting them in the public right of way.
There is a process by which they can do that under chapter 606.
There is a process, that's right. It requires approval by the Public Service Department to put them in the public right of way. Now, as a general rule, with, you know, if somebody puts up a garage sale sign or a open house or something like that, if it's only there for a day or two, chances are, you know, they're, they, their event, whatever it is intended, would be overlooked by the time we would get out there to take it.
Right. Chapter 606 specifically spells out, they can do it without public service approval if it's two days before the sale and as long as it's removed in a certain time period. So I just wanted to make sure that when you're doing the rewrite, we clarified that chapter 606 is either repealed or that 1300 doesn't conflict with that.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Maybe I'm missing it in here. Does this address it all? For example, on Michigan Avenue, there's some signs that have been spray painted since I moved to the east side. So it's, I don't know if the business is there, it's like a for lease sign actually, but it's been spray painted for seven years. So would this give us the ability to enforce on that sign, or did we already have that?
I'm not sure what you mean, Councilman, by spray paint. Are you talking about graffiti or active vandalism?
Yeah. So the sign is actually like above the building sign, and at one point said for lease, and then someone spray painted it all out. So now it just says free?
Okay.
It's, no, I'm serious. It's been there for like a long time.
I'm not familiar with that. But there is a separate ordinance entirely that deals with graffiti.
Okay.
And that may fall under that category. You'll still have to go look at it. Painted signs are regulated as wall signs.
Okay. So even, so if there's damage to a sign, like someone's graffitied it, and there's no business there, or it's an advertisement?
Yeah. If it's, if it's clearly graffiti, we have an ordinance that specifically deals with that. But if it could be considered signage, then it would be what's allowed, you know, for that building under the sign code. So we just have to take a look at it and make that determination based on the particular situation. Where is that, Councilman? If you, or if you want to let me know later, that'd be fine. I'd be glad to take a look at it. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right. Seeing none. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right. We are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Vice, I'm sorry, Councilman Jackson, or Councilman Brown.
Thank you. I just wanted to just give a quick comment about the conference that I was able to attend with the Lansing Empowerment, oh, sorry, with the Lansing Empowerment Network. And just wanted to share a few things. The first two days of the, with the Okla, we went with the Lansing Empowerment Network to the Omaha Empowerment Network Conference. The first two days of the conference was a deep dive into the Omaha, did I say Oklahoma? Omaha, thank you. Omaha Empowerment Network. We, along with other national partners from New Orleans, Tulsa, Kansas City, Memphis, and others, met at the Village Empowerment Center in the heart of North Omaha. This gave me the opportunity to meet with other council members from other cities who shared their perspective and level of support for the program. During the next day, we attended several breakout sessions ranging from Cradle to Career, Thriving Communities and Youth Employment. We then toured five major areas of transformation in North Omaha that once were locations of high gun violence and now serve as strong developments. Overall, being able to witness the model that Lansing Empowerment Network is working to bring to our city, seeing it firsthand, how it has turned an impoverished, violence-stricken area of the city into a thriving, self-sustaining economic powerhouse in the city of Omaha was eye-opening. The initiative has been going for approximately 18 years, very strong, and I would encourage this body, if there's any additional questions that we invite Lansing Empowerment Network leadership to present more information. And it was amazing, and I was so privileged to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right. I would like to, Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, I guess I would just say thank you too. We actually have a few folks in the audience that I think were critical in bringing this to the city of Lansing. And so I wanted to thank Mike Lynn, Erica Lynn. I also know that Mr. Paul Anderson is part of the network as well. So we certainly appreciate it. And we're looking forward to seeing how we, you know, fully integrate this into this, you know, city of Lansing operations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Hussein. I guess I just have a comment. I would like to express my complete gratitude to Councilman Cost. Over the last several years, I've been taking care of the flower planters on South Cedar Street, and I wrote a post on Facebook about how somebody decided to steal a couple of the rose bushes out of there. It was a little upsetting, just because it's an area that doesn't really get too much attention from our city. It's an MDOT stretch, and they only mow it seven times a year. And Councilman Cost took it upon himself to put new, new rose bushes in those two flower planters that they were stolen. So thank you so much. He's a first war, but he's also all around the city doing great things. So thank you very much, Councilman Cost. That was very much appreciated. I know South Lansing owes a debt of gratitude to you. Thank you.
All right.
Vice President Hussein?
I didn't know if Councilwoman Carter would do it. And I think we both want to announce the Churchill Downs Community Association's picnic, their annual picnic, June 18th, 6:00 PM, at Wainwright Park. So please come out if you are a resident of that area. It's always a fantastic time. They have, you know, great food, music, you know, activities for the kids. My understanding is there's going to be a softball game this year. So again, if you have the time, that is June 18th at 6:00 PM. That does conflict with the City of Lansing Charter Commission meeting. That is June 18th. So same date at 6:30 PM on the 10th floor. So I'm really imploring folks, you know, if you're, if you're a member of Churchill Downs, get out to that picnic. And if you're not, get up to the 10th floor of City Hall, because that effort, which again is tantamount to a constitutional convention right here in the city of Lansing, is, it's paramount at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any additional comments from council? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. When you mentioned the Constitutional Convention and the Charter, it just made me think how there was something that I miss as a councilperson that I just wanted to say. So when Councilperson Brown offered his amendment to put more funding in for the diversion program in 54A District Court, it passed. We voted on that amendment. It passed, and then the mayor did a veto. And then I mistakenly thought that we would be able to vote today whether or not to override that veto. However, within a certain amount of time, two councilpeople have to come forward and put an override on there within a certain day. I found out about it on the last day and wasn't able really to get that much movement. Councilman Brown was out of town. So it just seems like when the convention's going and reviewing it, when, I mean, that's just one of the things that will be decided. How do vetoes happen? How many people does it take to override, et cetera, et cetera? And my thought is, is that if council voted on it and it was important enough to add as an amendment, that it's very important. So I understand there's procedures, and that's, you know, our job to be informed. But we missed it, and that's something that the commission's going to also review. So just putting it out there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. City Clerk?
Thank you, President Garza. Just want to announce that we had our first after-hours passport acceptance event tonight down on the 9th floor. We will be doing that many city council meeting Mondays. So if you need to get a passport, we'll be doing that, I know, at the next council meeting, and we have a schedule posted on our website. But from 5:30 to 7:30, I know when you're getting a passport for the first time or for a person under 16, you do have to come in person, bring your, bring various documents and payment. So we wanted to offer some evening hours, and we had close to 20 folks this evening that took advantage of that. So I want to thank my staff for working late and handling that. Also want to announce that we did send out notifications to most Lansing residents about early voting, election information, as well as absentee ballot applications. Those, the main pool of people that those did not go to are the folks that are already signed up to automatically get a ballot. So that early voting notification will, will come with your ballot in a couple weeks. And ballots will be out, I think it's around the 27th or 28th of this month, they will go in the mail for the August primary election. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
So, you already know my name. My name is Nicholas Andy. And the Old Everett Neighborhood Association will be hosting its first monthly meeting on June 12th, this Wednesday, at 6:30 PM, at the Village Lansing, 3525 South Martin Luther King Boulevard, Suite G. I will write out and send out the agenda for the meeting whenever I can. So, and also, please do not bring alcohol or cigarettes to the meeting, or any other satanic items, because, because you really shouldn't be bringing those things to the meeting. And also, please clean up after yourself after the meeting. We'll also be electing members of the board, probably all but maybe the vice president and a board member if we don't get a candidate for that slate. So, but anyways, most of the board members will be.
Thank you. Any other community events?
Good evening. This is a community event announcement. A call goes out over the water. Where has the time gone, says the crane. My name is Kyle Richard, and I'm speaking to you today as a candidate for Lansing Board of Education. I'll be hosting a campaign launch event, June 18th. It's going to be a busy day at 6:00 PM at The Fledge, that's 1300 Eureka Street. We're going to be sharing some pizza, some conversation. There'll be a brief presentation and then discussion about what we want and need in the Lansing School District. So again, that's June 18th at 6:00 PM at The Fledge, 1300 Eureka Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
Okay. I don't know how I'm going to follow that, but, hi all. Erica Lynn, I just wanted to invite you all and anyone else that is interested, or this is pertinent to, to this Wednesday. That is Wednesday, the 12th, our Lansing 360 Gun Violence Prevention Collaborative Meeting. That is an initiative of the Lansing Empowerment Network. What to expect in this? These are collaborative meetings that are addressing gun violence with essential stakeholders, cross-sector. Often, you'll see members of Lansing Fire Department, Lansing Police Department, School District, like officials, judges, community organizations, and of course, community members. Together in these meetings, it is a very powerful sharing of information that is pertinent to gun violence prevention and addressing gun violence, addressing root causes. And it's empowering folks to take that information and those updates back to the work that they're doing within our community, and be a lot more intentional and a lot more strategic. So we are identifying trends, addressing recent incidents, and seeking solutions. That is this Wednesday at noon. If you like information, www.lansingempowermentnetwork.org.
Thank you. Other community events?
Follow up on that, you also can find it on Facebook for TV Land, at the Empowerment, Lansing Empowerment Network. We have our fourth annual peace picnic this Sunday on Father's Day. So for the last three Father's Days, I've spent lifting speakers and setting up stuff and doing barbecue and so on and so forth. Why this is so important is because we went to the heart of where the issue is. They say Track 37 is the most dangerous space in our city. I don't believe that to be true, but ultimately, we went to the heart of it, which is Wainwright Park, and said, we can do this, and we can do it without any incident. So we have, over the last three years, I think what we're trying to do with the Lansing Empowerment Network, with the 360, and just the collaborations around gun violence prevention, is bringing more people to the table. Traditionally, Churchill Downs has theirs right after ours, and it's like a night and day, the people that are out there. And I really want to mingle that and mix that up. I think it's important, if you all can make it out there on Sunday, even just for a minute, just to show your faces, to show people that are impacted by this, this Track 37, as people say, that we're all united in this front. 3 o'clock, 3 o'clock to 8, Wainwright Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other community events? All right. Then we are to registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters tonight is items 6 through 21 on the agenda. And we'll give you about another minute to get up and get with Tyron to complete a sign-up form if you wish to speak. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few announcements today. One, I want to announce that we, our Neighborhood Advisory Board has completed their neighborhood grants. 96 projects selected, $160,000 issued. So we're going to start seeing these neighborhood projects all over the city. You've got 196 great projects that are going to be done by neighborhoods throughout the city. So that's exciting. We had our annual River Walk and Run. We had over 700 people there. It was the most that we've had since I've been here. And it was great. There were probably 80 to 90 runners, and then the rest were walkers, and people just enjoyed our river trail from Potter Park Zoo to Turner Dodge House. And it was really a wonderful event. Thank you, everyone that was there. And we got to enjoy the Art Path, which is right up and down that path, some beautiful art. So thank you to all the artists that helped to install projects. Our Concerts in the Park start this Wednesday, June 12th. Root Doctor will be playing at Moore's Park School. I believe it's at 7:00 PM. Those are always a lot of fun. So check out our Parks webpage for every Wednesday's event. But this Wednesday is Root Doctor. I want to thank the folks involved with the art unveiling at Washington Park. If you haven't been there, I cannot explain how awesome it is. These eight or nine incredible posters of women who are in the Michigan Hall of Fame from first to last. Senator Stabenow is one of them. We'll be renaming the park for her. But if you want to see just an impressive display of art, especially these historic women, I'm going to bring my daughter there to see it. It's really impressive. South Side at Washington Park. So thank you to T, who's the artist. She just did a fantastic job. And this is one of our arts grants. So again, you know, this council, myself, we work together for neighborhood grants, and now we're seeing the fruits of that effort. We work together for arts grants, and now we're seeing this fantastic art display. So thank you for all you've done, and I'm excited to see this all coming, coming together. I want to remind folks out there in TV Land that, that, TV Land, that lifeguards and camp counselors are still needed. So if you want to be a lifeguard or a camp counselor, please check in at the city's Parks webpage. We could still use them. We want, the more camp counselors we have, the more kids that we can have at camp this summer, which is so needed in our city for things, kids to have things to do. Same with lifeguards. We want to have lifeguards over at Hunter Park and at the South Side pools. So we could really use them. And last but not least, I want to congratulate our very many Lansing schools, high school graduates. I got to see firsthand Everett at 11:30, and my daughter walked, walked down the aisle, and I was a proud papa. But it was great to see Everett kids and then Eastern kids at 1:30. And I didn't get to see the Sexton kids, but I know they were there at 5:00. But just wonderful seeing our young people graduating and going out into the world, whether it's college, whether it's a trade, whether it's going to work, wherever it was, these wonderful students. And we had, at least recently, record-breaking graduation rates. So congratulations to all of our high school seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Short.
All right. We are to public comment on legislative matters, although I do not believe we have anyone signed in to speak under legislative matters. So we are to the consent agenda. we have anyone signed in to speak under legislative matters. So we are to the consent agenda.
Did we have anybody register online?
We did not.
Okay. Consent agenda. Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So we already took care of number seven, eight, and nine. So that leaves us balance of number six. We have a tribute in memory of Tracy Katrina Tolbert. We also have number 10, an annual training requirement, or resolution pertaining to an annual training requirement for all city boards and commissions. This is related to training on the ethics ordinance, conflicts, conflicts of interest in the Open Meetings Act. We have a resolution, memorandum of agreement, Greater Lansing Regional Committee for Stormwater Management membership. We also have resolutions of appointment for Jenna McShane as a member of the Lansing Public Media Authority Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2024, as well as Lillian Wurbin as a member of the Lansing Public Media Authority Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. We have a resolution to set a public hearing on special assessment for snow and ice removal for the winter of 2023 through 2024. And then we also have a resolution pertaining to a community funding application for Lansing 501 Damn Jam Music Festival. And so with that, I would move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, comments from council? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
We are to resolutions for action. We have Item 16, the appointment of Eric Tans to the CADA board.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So we had Mr. Eric Tans in earlier tonight as part of our committee of the whole process. We took a little bit of a look at the application, which was actually submitted April 4th, so relatively recently. Mr. Eric Tans talked to us about being a Ward 1 resident for, I think, close to 10 years. He is, or has been involved with the MSU Traffic and Transportation Committee as a faculty member. He is librarian out at Michigan State University. Talked to us a little bit about being a regular rider of CADA, which we appreciate. Certainly, we believe all board members should be regular riders of CADA. Talked a little bit about the importance of public transportation as it pertains to protection of the environment, kind of as a catalyst for economic growth and ascension, and certainly for the vibrancy of a community. So it was excellent interview. We do have four City of Lansing positions with regard to this particular board. And so he would fill one of those four. I believe that we still have one vacant position. But with that said, happily, I would move the resolution for Mr. Eric Tans as a City of Lansing member of the Capitol Air Transportation Authority Board for a term to expire in June, sorry, expire in 2026.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have Item 17, the local development finance authority budget.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So we actually had Mr. Chris Klein, who was a board member, in earlier tonight as part of the committee of the whole process, talk to us a little bit about this particular authority, its creation back in, I believe it was 2005, the fact that we partnered with East Lansing. You also have Inglewood County and MSU that's involved. And really, the purpose of the authority is to help to grow, cultivate, et cetera, tech-based businesses in the region. So in any event, there is a annual budget that has to be approved. East Lansing has to approve that budget. We have to approve the budget. And then the authority actually approves the budget. So this is simply our, our annual process of approving the budget. Was discussed earlier that there have been some fixes, essentially, in the process, so that we can, annual basis, actually take a look at this as we are vetting and approving our city fiscal year budget. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do you have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
And we have Item 18, claim appeal.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. This is a claim appeal for a trash debris removal from a house. Essentially, last year in the fall, a owner of a property had felon limbs that were put on the right-of-way and left there longer than the time, and not chopped up and all those things. So there was a notice sent, and the contractor eventually came out and removed it, and estimated or charged 33 yards worth of removal for the limbs. And also, the administration fee coming out to $14,000, excuse me, $1,435. The owner appealed and originally said, had some issues with the notice he received. And the claim board reviewed that and determined that notices were proper, and that the claim was proper. The claim, the owner appealed to the committee on operations, and we reviewed it. And he said that the yardage was too big at this point. Committee talked about everything, reviewed everything. I looked at the amount and thought that it did seem like a lot of cubic yards per the picture here, and asked for maybe an expert or someone to come in and look at it. However, we had a motion and voted to deny the claim. And here we are today to approve that denial.
Okay. So was that a motion for the denial of the claim?
Yes, it is. I'll move the, I'll move the denial for a vote, and then I'll make a comment.
Okay, so we have a proper motion in place, and this is to deny, so that he will not be charged with $1,400?
Incorrect. He is, charged it, and the board voted 2-1 to approve that charge.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments, questions from council?
Just quickly. I just looked at this, and I know the board had a problem with the original notice being the main thing, and then later, the amount of the charge. It did seem, and nobody can see it, maybe you can, but you can see here, that's a debris pile here. That's the, obviously, a fire hydrant. And long story short, is that ended up to be 33 yards. And as a person who gets mulch dumped in three yards, and it looks comparable to that, I can't imagine it being all the way to excess of 33. And my thing is, if we think we see the contractor as overcharging, regardless of when we determine and when it comes up, if it's claim review before, after, or now, it seems like we should do the right thing and correct it. Committee can speak for themselves, but they had very valid points about, you know, the debris being there, it being the homeowner's fault, and that other taxpayers have to pay for the cleanup, and that everything was notified properly. I understand that. However, I voted to grant his appeal, because it seems like this contractor was trying to get over by overcharging. I found out this contractor no longer works for us, because he did not renew his contract. So here we are, and I will leave it at that for the vote.
Okay, so we have a proper motion. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. So what I would say is, when we had this before us, one of the things, the wood chips, for example, they're not measuring it in ground-down material. They're measuring it in what they fill, you know, with the full leafs, you know, how much is in that trailer. So looking at it like it's mulch wouldn't be a good example, because they're not chipping that up. I think the other issue with this property was, there's three trash violations that happened back to back to back. This was the middle one. And then a month later, we had to go in and clean up another trash violation. So there was a pattern there. And through talking, we also learned, you know, when this went to the claims review, essentially, a proof of service was asked for when it was provided. Then, you know, this person came to us as city operations, asking for it. We gave that proof. Then they, you know, the issue was the yardage. In asking about the letter that was written to the claims review board, the person had made note that they didn't have any help, and then said that must have been an employee that wrote that, which was concerning, because the whole thing was rather deceptive, I think. And, you know, I think that we're always willing to work with someone. But again, these are costs incurred by the city. You know, we still had, we paid for this. Unfortunately, that's the price that is set. Personally, do I think it's too high? You know, yeah, but that's the price that those contractors set, unfortunately. I think that this is a conversation that, before I came on council, I've heard this conversation come up before, too, with these contractors. And, you know, we're not the ones setting the price, other than the administration fee. So that was why I voted to deny the claim. I just wanted to explain a little bit better on why it was a 2-1 vote.
Okay, Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd add is that, you know, this did go before the claims review committee. And many times, we don't see the things that go before that committee, because they adjust down when appropriate, and things are accepted. But when you looked at, when we looked at the original authorization, it was, it was one hour and 12 cubic yards. We were actually, we were charged, right? And then we're obviously, you know, trying to recoup the cost for one hour and 27 cubic yards of waste. But there is a reauthorization process, and it was told to us that that process actually did occur. So code did take a look at it, and they did reauthor, or I should say, reauthorize or authorize an additional 13 cubic yards of waste. The, the issue with regard to the brush, you know, being processed down, that's, that's more of an issue with our contract. We have talked at length. I remember when our internal auditor, Eric Brewer, was here, did some research for us in terms of the back of a truck, and what can fit in the back of, back of a truck in terms of cubic yards of waste. And this is, when you looked at the pictures, the proof, that at first, we were told we didn't have, by this particular claim. It, it is right around 25 to 30 cubic yards of waste. And so we thought it was appropriate. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments from council? Councilman Jackson.
I just want to acknowledge that I do see the homeowners here, but it appears that he didn't sign up and everything. And I know there's procedure. So just so that he's acknowledged that we do see him here, and hopefully, I was able to represent his side as he stated it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we do have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to Item 19, Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificates for Prudential Lofts.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So we do have Mr. Chris Klein here. I can probably handle it, but if I, if I leave anything out or say anything wrong, we're going to bring him down to the wall, and he could correct me. NEZs, you know, we really haven't dealt with one of these since 2009. They essentially provide a tax incentive for the development of or rehabilitation of residential housing. And we, if you recall, back in February of this year, actually approved a, it's a two-step process. You have to first approve a district, and then there is no tax benefit essentially to, to the district itself. And then property owners within that district can come forth with requests for a cert. So again, we established wheel district number 25 in February this past year. We were told at that time that there are really three types of certs that could come forth to this particular body, one being a rehab facility cert. The applicant, which is Summit Street Development Company LLC, is applying for a rehab cert. And Harry Happler, he was here to discuss this, not only DMP, but also when we looked at a public hearing for the actual development of the district, talked a lot about the particular development in question. This is a 134-unit residential, what they're calling a green development. This is at 700 May Street. They are asking, well, I'll talk about that in a minute. With regards to the development, the rents will ultimately be about $1,100 to $1,300, depending on square footage. It was told to us in committee that square footage will range anywhere from 450 square feet to 550 square feet. All 134 units are going to be one-bedroom units. We're also told that there will be some amenities, including a pool, pickleball courts, cross-training space, community rooms, and more. Proposed start date for construction would be September of this year. They believe that they will complete that construction at some point in September of 2025. Always important is, you know, obviously, job growth and things of that nature. This will result in three new FTE positions. And then with regard to the cert, it is a 12-year cert. Per statute, they have the ability to ask for up to 15 years. So again, this is a 12-year cert. Tax abatement over the course of the 12 years is valued at about $4 million. However, with regard to City of Lansing operating taxes, it's only about $870,000. So the rest of that is from remaining taxing jurisdictions. There will still be taxes paid on the property. So over the 12 years, there will be about $1 million paid in taxes, and about $400,000 of that will be coming to the City of Lansing. It was told us that the property right now is generating about $14,000 to the City of Lansing in operating taxes. But again, or maybe I didn't say this, when it is uncapped essentially at the end of this cert, it'll be about $121,000 a year coming into the City of Lansing. Outside of that, are we good? All right. With that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Councilman Cost.
Just, thank you, President Garza. Just a quick question for Councilman, Vice President Hussein. And maybe I missed it. This does include the neighborhood that's right there too, as well. Correct that street?
So, not this particular cert. So with regards to the district, I think there's some 20, was it 20 parcels? Like, so this is, this is just this particular parcel.
Okay.
And if you recall, everybody within that district is eligible. And Mr. Happler actually told us that at some point, he would help to get out and educate property owners on potential of applying for a cert.
You're right. I recall that now. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none. We do have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. And Councilmember Hussein introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to repeal and replace the existing signs ordinance being Part 13 Title IV of the Lansing Codified Ordinance in its entirety with Part 13 Title II, regulating the size, location, and character of signs and sign structures on property in Lansing. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. Just very quickly, I want to thank Principal Planner Andy Fiedewa, as well as our zoning administrator, Sosa Statuik, for, for being with us earlier during special presentations and ceremonies. They gave what I thought was a fantastic presentation. I don't think there's a lot more to be said. So what we are doing is establishing a public hearing. That would be for the repealing and replacing of the existing sign ordinance, which was written back in 1990. But the public hearing would be July 8th, 7:00 PM, on the top floor of City Hall. So with that, I would move the setting of the public hearing.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments from council? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, now we have Councilmember Garza introduce an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, read adopting the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee of the Whole.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So this is just the annual adoption, recodification of our ordinances for new council members. Our ordinances and charter actually require that we recodify our ordinances every 10 years. We did that successfully in 2007, 2017. There was some systemic failure, and we did not do that. So we realized that early 2018. We essentially then passed an emergency ordinance that temporarily recodified, as we actually went and reviewed and, and I should say, looked at potential changes and deletions and things of that nature. And then we actually passed an ordinance that recodified on a more permanent basis. That being said, we decided in 2018, I think Carol Wood was president at the time, that we would, as opposed to, you know, doing this on a 10-year, or every 10 years, which is required per the charter and ordinances, that we would actually do this on an annual basis. So we always do it right around budget time. And so with that being said, I would move, again, for a setting of a public hearing, and I believe this is July 8th as well.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments from council? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. So if you haven't had a chance to get with Tyron, we'll give you about another minute to sign up to speak if you wish to. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
All right, Vice President Hussein.
I would move that, sorry, I would move that all items be considered as read in full, and if appropriate, referrals be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have from the city clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Notice of the veto of the Notice of the veto of the portions of the budget.
Place on file.
Board of Water and Light Fiscal Year 25 Budget and Capital Forecast.
Committee of the Whole, Internal Auditor.
And notice that the City Hall Sale and Redevelopment Agreement was placed on file with my office, and, by the way, is available on the City website.
Committee of the Whole.
Items from the mayor, setting a public hearing on the sale of City Hall.
Committee of the Whole.
First Amendment to the Lansing Public Media Authority Articles of Incorporation.
Committee of the Whole.
Local Development Finance Authority Budget.
Committee of the Whole, Internal Auditor.
Budget Amendment, National Opioid Settlement Funds.
Committee of the Whole.
Budget Amendment, Fiscal Year 23/24 Fourth Quarter.
Committee of the Whole.
Workers' Compensation Settlement.
Ways and Means, Internal Auditor.
And a sole source purchase for Parks and Recreation to use Level Up as the vendor for Stabinow Park Fitness Court Installation.
Ways and Means, Internal Auditor.
Communications and Petitions, Communication from William Hamilton and Objection to the Parking Kiosk Pay Stations.
City Operations, a place on file.
And we have three notices from the Liquor Control Commission, Salt Brewing Company for a new microbrew, new small wine at 519 West Ionia, Rio Town Clubhouse, new ad-bar permit at 1314 South Washington, and DC Shaw LLC transferring an escrow license at 916 Cesar Chavez.
City Operations.
We are to remarks by council members.
Any additional remarks by council? Vice President Hussein.
Just as we go through that, just a quick question for the mayor. So I'm looking at number 32, Sole Source Purchase, Parks and Recreation Department requests Level Up Retail Services to the vendor for Stabinow Park Fitness Court Installation. I know that the 2023 CIP included a fit lot for Ben Davis. This isn't that, correct? Like, we haven't made a decision to... So this is in addition to. This isn't supplanting.
I don't believe this is that, but we can have Brett answer that question. I don't believe so.
And we do have Mr. Tiersen Wal... I don't know if he has any information. If you could just very quickly, maybe come down to the podium. I just want to make sure that we're still getting a fit lot at Ben Davis.
I know we were working on it. I know it was in the plan, and it was something that we've been working on.
Do you have it for me? Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. So the Stabinow Park fit lot was the 2022 CIP, I believe, and then 2023 was for the intended one at Ben Davis. So this is in addition to. Was that your question, if we were supplanting? Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't understand. Yeah, no, it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. All right. Do we have any additional comments from council? I would just like to say, Mr. Zandi out there, thank you for reviving the old Everett Neighborhood Association. I'm looking forward to attending your meetings. Unfortunately, this meeting that you're having, your first meeting, I will be out of town at a work engagement. So I'd look forward to hearing the next meeting you have, and I'd do my best to be there. So thank you.
Remarks from the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
Just one I forgot to mention. We have a celebration of diversity coming for the City of Lansing on 6/27 at 4:30 p.m. here in City Hall. I'll announce it again at the next council meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are to public comment on city government-related matters. Speakers have up to three minutes to address the council on city-related items. And the first speaker is Alex Jones, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Good evening, mayor and councilmen and women. I just want to, first of all, congratulate the city council and the mayor on... I don't know if you read the article in the USA and World Report. They got the City of Lansing listed as 106 of over 100,000 cities and villages in the USA, in the US territory, a great place to live. And I want the city council to pat yourselves on the back. This is a great place to live. Over 100 and some thousand cities and villages here in the USA and the territories. Washington, DC, we was rated 106. So hats off. This is a great place to live. So I want to just say hats off to that. But I also want to thank the mayor and also President Garza for meeting me with their roadside memorials. They actually met with me on this matter, and I just wanted to... I had a whole bunch of notes I wanted to say, but I just wanted to know, can you follow up on me on those roadside memorials? Let's help our citizens here in Lansing, help memorialize them by planting a tree or a bush. And I just want to just park it there. So hats off to the city. Congratulations to the city. Look up the article, USA and World Report. It's a great place to live. I'm going to continue to say that. Thank you. Thank you, President. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, brother.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Okay. First, I want to begin by filling in the blank that I missed in the public comment during the Committee of the Whole, the third point. We were talking about the uses of... Potential uses of reserve officers in the city. And in just one incident alone, the mass shooting at the Rotary Park a few weeks back, reserve officers could have served in three different places in that incident. First, in a before situation, crowd control. If there had been reserve officers available to disperse that crowd before there was a shooting, there may not have been a shooting. Second, during the incident, they could have provided scene security and perimeters instead of having to bring in municipal or mutual aid to do that. And then after the incident, the mayor has said he is going to enforce curfews. But we have no way to enforce curfews with the staffing that we currently have on hand. Reserve officers could be enforcing curfews. So just in that one instance alone, there are three opportunities that reserve officers could have served in a public facility way that would serve our public better and reduce stress and overtime on our officers and reduce our costs. Another way they could do so would be these fraudulent panhandlers that have been invading the city recently with their signs saying that they're raising money for funerals of a child that died 10 years ago or six months back in some other country and doesn't really actually even been proven to exist. Reserve officers could be out there policing that. And then lastly, I would like to make an announcement that we didn't have time to do this through the official channels and get a presentation in the dais and all of that. But the mayor did issue a proclamation for the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemeteries recognizing Mount Hope Cemetery's 150th birthday on June 9th, and declaring that June 9th, 2024, in the City of Lansing is Mount Hope Cemetery's Sesquicentennial Day. I don't have time to read the whole thing, but I'll take a photo of it, post it on our Facebook and on our website, and you can look at it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Jacob Russell.
So this is going to be a tough public comment for me to talk about because it's something I saw at a bus station at the South Side Meyer. And it specifically pertains to graffiti there that I saw. Right on the floor of the bus station at the South Side Meyer was a symbol of hate. And that's specifically the symbol that the Germans used in the 1930s and 1940s as their flag. And you know exactly what I'm talking about and where I'm going on this. That symbol is absolutely not only offensive, it's also a symbol of tyranny, and it's something I do not condone. And also, it's offensive to draw that in any context, in any place. But it's also really offensive to do that during Pride Month, and especially also during the anniversary of D-Day. Like, I don't even understand what any motivation was to even draw that at a bus station for graffiti. It's like, I can't even comprehend what was going on through their head because the Nazis did some really horrible things to the LGBT community, including executing about 15,000 of them, maybe even more. I don't know. Statistics don't exactly tell me everything. But say this, it's just downright anger-inducing that anyone would draw that as a piece of graffiti in a bus station, especially when you consider that at a grocery store. Since bus stations are for... Bus stops are for everyone to go to whenever they're waiting for a bus, regardless of their race, religion, or sexuality, or anything about them. It is just downright infuriating that I saw that and sickening and saddening that someone does that. And I think for... I think you should call on CADA to investigate that and possibly paint over that place so that that whole graffiti situation can be taken care of. That's all I shall say about this, and I'll yield the rest of my time because I need to calm myself down.
Thank you. Next, we have Jacob Russell, followed by David Ellis.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Jacob Russell. I met you, most of you, last week. I'm running for Ingham County Commissioner in District 6. Today, I'd like to talk a little bit about something that I heard that's adjacent to one of my issues that I'm running on. One of my primary goals if elected as commissioner is to work with you, potentially, to direct funding into businesses such as Consumer Energies and Board of Water and Light to ensure that funding is directed to them, to put power poles in the ground to alleviate the power grid from stresses such as storms and... Oh, sorry. I lost my place. By ensuring the longevity and resilience of it, putting power lines underground in high-density areas to prevent power outages, in some cases, like my neighbors lasting for weeks on end due to their power mast being torn off their houses, especially during last September storm. Additionally, some of that funding would be partitioned for training apprentices on the increased workload to those companies, which would be an extremely beneficial job creation motive for our council and our county to keep our students in Lansing, hopefully, long-term. Seeing that I have a little bit of extra time, Juneteenth is approaching. I'm looking forward to the celebrations across Lansing, and I hope that you guys are looking forward to a great time, too. But more importantly, I think that the city and the council can look towards creating brochures to inform our citizens and business owners or potential future entrepreneurs the information and the opportunities and resources available to them in order to create a better Lansing. We're 106, but we can do better. And then lastly, one of the major problems, I think, hasn't been touched on by the city or the council, is that there's an extreme lack of increase in building and housing. There's building, there's renovating, and there's the neighborhood funding projects. But we're noticing, just like the rest of the country, a lack of low-to-middle-income housing, and it is forcing people to stretch their incomes as rent, mortgage, and the cost of living goes higher. I would appreciate if the council, who are all most likely aware of this issue, look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Ellis, followed by Daniel Arnold.
Hi. David Ellis, downtown resident. I'm a little late to the party, but I wanted to comment on the delay of the MLK project. This is a little ridiculous, so I'm going to be a little ridiculous, too, and start off by saying, what is a democratic process? So very briefly, we elected the mayor. We all voted for him. That's democratic. We elected the city council. That's democratic. The mayor appoints people to boards who are approved by the city council. That seems a little wishy-washy, but according to the US Constitution and the Supreme Court, that is also democratic. The Public Service Department and the Planning Department both have had many, many public meetings to determine a city plan. And in the city plan, they had determined the MLK corridor and the land alongside it to be... Land to be enhanced. That also seems like a democratic process to me. What doesn't seem like a democratic process to me is to have this entire procedure in place that we followed all the steps through, and then at the very last, very last second, slam on the emergency brakes for a small vocal minority's wishes. In the interest of neutrality, I will say, there were valid concerns with the project and specifically how it relates, how it interacts with the neighborhoods adjacent to it. For example, the neighbors in the West Side community had voiced that they want to have less access to their neighborhood, and this is something that could be added to the project. So a delay isn't completely unwarranted. So I'm not here to say that this is a complete policy failure. This is a huge overstepping of boundaries. But when it comes down to it, we have a procedure in place for a reason. We have certain requirements from the Public Service Department to tell us what they're doing, to tell us that this is why we're doing it. Here's the safety things. All of their safety stuff is available on the Public Services page on the City website. So any of their safety documentation is available to the public. I could talk about that safety. I could talk about the benefits of reducing the lanes, how that will decrease noise on the avenue, how that will improve safety. None of that really matters right now. We have the procedure to ensure that this has already been taken care of. So when the project continues to go forward, because I don't believe it's completely dead yet, our job isn't to just do vibes-based engineering. We're not here to just say, oh, I feel like this isn't a good project. We're here to take their data, make sure that they dotted their i's and crossed their t's, and then approve it. So please, when it comes time, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel Arnold, and then Luna Brown.
Hi, everybody. This is Daniel Arnold. Really happy to be around all of you here. You've just been a real blessing in my life, all of you councilmembers serving over the years as I've come around. I do love my city, Mayor Shore, and the nature and the art projects. One thing I want to really think about is around the Lansing Center. There's been some efforts to spruce it up and make it look better, but like underneath the bridge of Michigan Avenue, right below the Lansing Center, it's like there's all this gray paint splattered here and there. And it's just like, other bridges have better artwork than this really key area, I think, could really be... Some art projects could really be put up there. In terms of gun violence, I know we've been talking a lot about that, all of us have. There was this silence to violence thing that I saw, Councilmember Trini at, and, you know, there was a press conference for gun violence. And I hope we haven't forgotten that Rotary Park's incident that involved the seven people being shot, that this had occurred before in 2021, that there were two teenagers that were shot dead them, too. And something that I particularly experienced is I walked up to this maintenance worker back in 2021, and he was taking a video camera down from the pole, and I said, what are you doing? And he said, it wasn't a real camera. I don't know what the current status is with surveillance, but I know that the Police Department really wants to build more of a unified surveillance system for the city to really, really catch people when this kind of thing happens. And I say that that's my idea of how to solve gun violence. There's just so many people out there, have so many good answers and ideas that I would really encourage people to come on out to a police commissioner meeting because the mayor is... I mean, the chief of police is right there, and he really... I've seen my friend have like an issue with whatever in her neighborhood, and he just sat there and just listened like all day. He's just really perceptive, and you should really come on out to a meeting. So our next police commissioner meeting is 200 North Foster Avenue, Foster Community Center, June 18th at 5:30 p.m. The last thing I want to say is, I do go around in... The last thing I want to say is, I do go around and meet with local, state, federal security police almost every day around the Capitol, and anybody would be welcome to come join me and really see the beauty of our Capitol, that we're in this great capital city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Luna Brown.
Hello, everyone. Happy Pride Month. My favorite definition of pride is consciousness of one's own dignity. It's the awareness that those of us in the minority have the same inherent worth as those in the majority. The goal of hate is to destroy this pride, and in doing so, destroy our community. Lately, we've seen an increase in hate-motivated crime in Lansing, primarily theft and vandalism. Walking around Lansing, it isn't especially unusual to have a slur shouted at me by someone driving by. Typically happens at least two to three times a month. Recently, me and my, many of my neighbors have had our pride's flag stolen off our porches by a group of teens. When Wayfaring Booksellers heard my pride flag was stolen, they immediately gave me a new one, which we hung this time on our second story so that thieves couldn't reach it. Ryan Cost has even offered to help replace pride flags of people in our neighborhoods who've had their pride's flag stolen. Thank you so much for that. Like, first Ward couldn't ask for a better representative, honestly. One of the biggest parts of pride for me is having a sense of community, and that is what this month is about to me. Community coming together in the face of adversity, despite the hate and their attempts to destroy our pride, we will stand firm, just like the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge. As some of you may know, next month is Disability Pride Month. If we're bringing up pride flags, I think it'd be great to be one of the, literally one of the first cities in the world to put a disability pride flag up in front of their city hall. So we continue, I did want to mention, too, I attended the DEI meeting last week, and I did find it a little concerning that, like, lots of different disenfranchised groups were mentioned as they were rattling off a bunch of stuff, and there was literally no mention of the disability community whatsoever. This is uncommon in DEI committees. Despite us being one of the largest minority groups in the country, we often have the least people advocating for us because many of us, our disabilities prevent us from advocating. We continue to come together as a community to empower each other. We have heard your statements on diversity and tolerance. My question to each of you on council is, this Pride Month, what are you personally doing to empower our communities? You know, we hear a lot coming from you, but what are you personally doing? What actions are you actually taking? We want to see this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further business on the agenda, we are adjourned.